So I'll call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the Region 15 Board of Education Meeting for February 10, 2020. We will all stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we begin all of our Board of Education meetings with the mission statement, the mission of Region 15, a collaborative community committed to excellence, is to educate every student to be productive, ethical, and engaged in a global society through proven and innovative learning experiences supported by a strong community whose decision-making is based in the best interest of all students. Next on the agenda is presentations. The Freedom of Information Act is going to be presented by Attorney Kevin Roy. Attorney Roy is a partner at Shipman &amp; Goodwin in Hartford. And Attorney Roy specializes in representing boards of education and municipalities on various issues, including Freedom of Information Act issues. And Attorney Roy has been our attorney for how long?
Um, she's been at Goodwin for three years.
I know, Shipman &amp; Goodwin's a long time.
Maybe 10?
Yeah, 10 years.
Maybe a little less.
Maybe a little bit less.
Right.
Thank you. And he's represented us in our negotiations with the various contracts. He represents the board in expulsions and just provides general advice to Attorney Roy. So we are very happy to have Attorney Roy here tonight to help us have a better understanding of the Freedom of Information Act.
Okay, so this is all right? I didn't know if I should sit in or outside of the circle.
Wherever you're comfortable.
So, good evening. Thank you for having me. Happy Monday. I'm giving you an overly extensive outline and I'm not going to cover it word by word because it's overly extensive. So hopefully it'll act as a resource if you have any questions going forward in case certain particular issues may come up. But I'm going to talk about the Freedom of Information Act and the nuts and bolts. We're going to start talking about what a meeting is, what the definition of a meeting is under the Freedom of Information Act, and then we'll also talk a little bit about records and records requests. The meeting part is obviously the part that is most germane to what you all do. So the Freedom of Information Act is a Connecticut-based law. There is a national Freedom of Information Act as well. The one that governs your functioning is in Connecticut. And it specifically defines, I'm not going to read the definition thoroughly, but it has a definition of what a meeting is. It also, in the statutory structure, defines what a meeting is not. And we're going to talk about both of those things as we go along. And then we'll talk about when you, as a public agency, maintain records, which ones are disclosibles, which ones are not, and what, okay? And what are the exceptions in those circumstances? You do get Freedom of Information requests regularly for records. We talk about it here and there, and over the years there has been a number of them. The public policy underlying the entirety of the Freedom of Information Act is essentially open government. And so the commission itself, and the commission is the Freedom of Information Commission in Hartford, they essentially take a much more broad disposition about that. So they err on the side of disclosed, they err on the side of post, they err on the side of, you know, following, I think, the rules and regs rather than erring on the side of being more circumspect about what gets disclosed, okay? So let's first talk about meetings and what they are. Generally, a meeting is a quorum of a public agency, and I know that we wanted to talk about that as it relates here because you have a minority rule, correct? But generally, it's a quorum of a public agency convened to discuss or act upon a matter of which it has responsibility. That can be done electronically as well. And that's one of the issues that we should talk a little bit about is how you communicate with each other in what circumstances and with respect to what content. Hey, how's it going?
How are you?
So let's talk about first your issue, which is the minority representation, because I understand your bylaws are such that you can't have a quorum unless you have at least one member from the other agency.
Correct.
So even though a quorum would generally be a majority of those present, you would have to modify that in order to understand what a quorum is. So under your rules, right? And that's different than the FOI, so you have to be a little bit careful about that. I'm not sure if the commission would necessarily respect the fact that you have a minority rule, because what you tried to do is say, we have five people from one town and no one from the other town, and then you still meet to talk about the business of the board. I think under the Freedom of Information Act, you would still have an issue with respect to if it wasn't published, if it wasn't notified, it wasn't an agenda, and you didn't go about the normal course of the running of a public meeting, you could still probably get things from that.
So the quorum for our bylaws could be different than the quorum required for the Freedom of Information?
Right. Because if you think it through, like if everyone, every public entity started to come up with its own rules about what a quorum is, that could actually work the open government law, right? Because you could set that up in a way that people could, you know, you have to have two from one side, et cetera. So, but a lot of it comes down to like the number of people in the subject that you're talking about. If you're talking about the business of the board, regardless of the circumstance in terms of locale, it's still going to be considered a quorum. If you have counted that in terms of a majority, I'm coming right to you. As well as if you talked about and done something that's in the course of the public business. So if we were celebrating Richard's birthday, that wouldn't be a problem. But if you're talking about the curriculum, or finances, or anything else that has to do with the running of a school district, then you're going to have to go under the normal procedure. I'll talk about those.
I have a question now. You say quorum, but we have weighted votes here. How does that affect the quorum?
I don't think it does. It's not a matter of your weighted voting or any of those types of notions. It's just about the presence. So, and we're not going to like start to split up people, right? But essentially, everyone is a person for the sake of determining whether that exists or doesn't.
So I have this back scenario for you.
Okay.
So sometimes we do tours of schools, right? And so the board members are invited to do a tour of the high school. And so typically, we have like a, you know, layout of what we're going to be doing. So let's say, and it's just to observe what's going on.
Sure.
And let's say on the way, I had noticed the lockers are banged up.
Right.
And I said, we should go and buy some new lockers. And she says, I don't think we should because they look fine to me. Now, so we took like a regular non-discussion, a non-meeting, and then all of a sudden now we're discussing board business. Does that become a meeting?
It does.
And how do we handle that?
Normally, the best way to handle that would be to recognize that it's occurring in the moment and saying, we should put this on the agenda at our next regular board meeting.
Okay.
To avoid that circumstance, because sometimes it happens that, hey guys, I'm sorry I had my back to you. But sometimes it happens that, you know, that's a pretty typical scenario. And what you should do, what happens is that it gets out that you had that conversation, right? And then the public's like, well, hey, how come I wasn't apprised of that? Because I have a lot of thoughts about lockers, right?
Big issue.
Right. And that's when we talk a little bit about regular meetings and posting agendas and notice, that's the whole purpose behind that, right? Is to apprise the public of what is to be discussed and what order a business will pursue, right? Or will be pursued by the board at the time. So it says in here on page three, the FOIC, the Freedom of Information Commission, has taken the vision that a proceeding of a public agency occurs whenever one or more members of the public agency meet to discuss or act upon a matter in which the agency has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power. The courts, and this was way back into the 90s, talked about whether a quorum has to be present in that circumstance or not. And I think you have to essentially err on the side of caution, that that could be seen as an illegal meeting. Now, let's take Marion's example and equate it out into telephone conversations. Conference call is a little easier, right? Because if you conferenced in a whole bunch of people, and you started to talk about superintendent's evaluation, right? That's an act, you know, that isn't further inside your job as a board member. It's about the business of the board, and you're having it on the phone. Is that okay or not?
With one other member?
Let's say four other members or five.
Sweet.
Yeah. And that's when you start to run into problems. And it's hard, because I think that we all, you know, tend to chat, and you guys all have a common identity, which is a board member, right? So that's probably a commonality that you often fall back on in terms of subjects of discourse, right? Like we all do in life. And so the best thing you can do about that is just off yourself and say, let's just put it on the agenda next time, and we'll have an open discussion of that.
What about texting?
Same thing.
It's the same thing as like a phone?
Yeah. I mean, oftentimes what we'll do is say, as a matter of best practice, and it's not necessary, but in an email context, and now texting is much more prevalent, but both are kind of electronic transmission of a dialogue essentially, or potential dialogue, is, I'm sorry, lost my track.
Texting.
Long day. Texting, email, yes, it's still the same thing, because if we're talking about the course of business. I also want to talk about, I guess I'm going out of order, what that means in terms of your personal cell phones and your personal computers, okay? Because if you can, and I think you guys all have like a .org, like a region15.org email, and you should use that, right? Because that keeps all of your board business in one spot. And, you know, we all kind of tend to have like a phone and a computer and accounts on that, multiple email accounts, you know, all of those types of things. But I would suggest that you stick with using just the board one. Because that way, if there's ever a request, so you could hear from Josh that says, a member of the public or the press would like to have all communications that relate to, it's been a long Monday, so I'm trying to come up with an example, but the budget, okay? And all of the discourse amongst the board members. Well, that's all public, even if it weren't, now we're talking about a record versus a meeting, but that's all subject to disclosure. There's no exception that allows you to hold that back.
If we were discussing it amongst ourselves?
No, I mean, that's still a public record, so that's different than a meeting in the conduct of a meeting. So what you've done is by texting each other, you've created a public record that's subject to disclosure. It doesn't have to be a quorum, doesn't have to be at the course of a meeting, it's just in your home course. And what happens is that if you are in a circumstance where you're using your home computer in an off-email, there is a potential that if someone's really fastidious about following up and files a complaint at the FOI, that you might have to bring that computer in, and that the forensic people would look at it to make sure that it's complete. Now, that's pretty attenuated, but you're opening yourself up to having your personal cellphone or email account searched.
Yeah. We aren't allowed personal notes, right? But are not necessarily subject to FOI or?
Perhaps. And we'll get to that, but it depends. But largely, no. And I think that's part of the thing to take from this, is that, you know, a question I'll get all the time is, oh, we have interviews, and I took notes in the margin of the resume. Are those subject to disclosure? And the answer is yes. Right? And so it's difficult. And those of you guys who know when we do, there's situations that come up, and people aren't thinking this through, but all records that occur in the course of the business of the running of the school district generally tend to be disclosable unless there's an exception. So I get piles of papers that I have to go through because there's a voluminous request, and I have to go through to check to make sure student names aren't there, nothing's identifiable. And you get emails that people say really foolish things to each other, right? Because it's that same old thing where you feel a little kind of disconnected. So we have situations where special-able cases will come up, and the teacher will be like, oh, that kid's a pain, you know? And then you're like, great, because we have to put this in, you know? And so you have to really be thoughtful about the level of discourse, because if you don't want the world to know it, you shouldn't say it, right? Because of that possibility that it could be out there.
Can I ask a question about document preservation then?
Yeah.
So totally get the Freedom of Information, but what is the implications or what is the expectation about storage of personal files? I could totally imagine under litigation, it's a DPN, right?
Right.
Like totally for however long or under that legal hold. But what's the overall recommendation?
It's actually not a recommendation, it's a schedule. So the state library system and the website, and I have it included in the outlines, you can go to the website and find it, actually gives a schedule of records retention.
Including personal notes?
Yeah. I mean, it would be in the course of a public documents, you'd have to see what that lines up with, but yes. Now, that's an interesting system, right? Because like from many years ago, I had a FOI case that related to, I think, the drafts or the notes leading up to the superintendent's evaluation. And someone spent a ton of time trying to find it because the request came in. And they went through all the boxes in the basement room, and they made a real effort, right? And I could put them on the stand to say like, what did you do to find it? And in the end, you know, they went through all of that, but in the end, it was gone. And the FOI doesn't really have jurisdiction over that, so essentially what we said is, well, you don't have jurisdiction, that's a records retention issue.
So I guess that's where my question is. So there's emails in an inbox or whatever, they've been sent. Can you hit delete or they're stored? I mean, there's on servers. I'm just trying to understand what the expectation of the region is as far as how long I have to save, if I'm handing a notebook or not, unless I'm under like some sort of legal?
I can follow up on that question specifically, because everything has a different amount of time associated with it, but we can look it up. And again, the webpage is actually pretty user-friendly, and you can look to see what that looks like.
Okay, and so the notes that I'm taking right now and what you're saying?
Yeah, potentially subject to disclosure. If you don't have them, you don't have them. You should look and kind of have a sense of what records retention is. It's usually like a five-year period, and there's a whole bunch of things associated with it. But yeah, sure, that's a possibility. Now, did most of the people in the world comply with that? No. Most boards I work with probably don't, right? Because it's like you throw it in your bag.
It's a bad?
Car, you go to the car, you know, you go back in your car, and you throw things out, you know? And that's how we all are. So that could possibly be the case. Certainly, in situations like I spoke of, which is like an interview or otherwise, if you're providing notes, those are potentially a concern, and you shouldn't have those. Especially because if you, you know, exfoliation, or you know, if you destroy that document, and there is a lawsuit, there could be a negative inference, right? That says like you destroyed that because it was not favorable to your position. And so that's kind of the type of thing you want to avoid. I don't get many requests over the years for people's notes, although I have had them. But generally, it's in very specific, kind of more contentious circumstances that the public's more kind of concerned about. Certainly, like what I'm saying is probably not that.
So like student records have a certain amount, like a board member notes at a public meeting, I think is a much bigger bar, in part because our meetings are public, they're recorded, so they, everybody can see everything that happens. I don't remember, so we'll go back and look, I don't remember seeing a statute that was specific to board member meeting notes.
It probably falls under some other?
Interviews, you know, certainly student records, student grades, health records.
Fifty years.
Right. For student records, it's 50 years that we have to restore files. That's, there's specific timelines for different types of data, teacher grade books, those kinds of things. I don't remember reading anything that was specific to board members, but I haven't looked, so.
I'm just trying to find out maybe where it is, but.
And then we have a form that fills out like seven years of financial records. So at the seven-year mark, there's a letter we fill out. They used to say have boxes of, you know, bank statements that are seven and a half years old. We need to destroy them, fill out the form, so the superintendent signs it, and then it goes up to Hartford, and then we get the okay back by okay to destroy, basically. So it's a pretty, Kevin's point, it's pretty extensive on retention records. The state has been good about that, on what to keep and not to keep.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to move back a little bit so that we can move forward. So essentially, we talked about what a meeting is. It's a proceeding of a public agency when one or more members of the agency is present and going to act upon something that you have jurisdiction over in the course of a meeting. It needs to be a quorum for that to occur. What is not a meeting? Administrative staff, not a meeting. So Josh can meet, even Josh could probably meet with Marion and the group of administrators that would not be considered a meeting. One of the biggest exceptions is collective bargaining, strategy with respect to collective bargaining. So those of you who have been on negotiations teams, you'll note that we don't ever notice those numbers, right? Because that's accepted. And in fact, the statute specifically states the following things are not meetings, and that is one of those things. You'll see here on page four, it says not all collective bargaining related meetings are exempted. So for instance, if you had a union grievance that came to you, the part of the hearing that relates to the presentation of evidence is public, but your deliberation is not, okay? And that's consistent with the fact that strategy with respect to collective bargaining is not a meeting, and therefore it doesn't have to be noticed, and you don't have to invite the public, because the outcome of a grievance, so if the grievance is something related to interpretation of a provision of a collective bargaining agreement, when you're deliberating and then you make a decision, that could impact what the meaning of that language is, right? And so that is strategy with respect to collective bargaining, because that's what you're stuck with as an interpretation, either going into arbitration, or if it doesn't get taken to arbitration, that's what it is, right? And so that kind of makes sense, and it has a consistency with the fact that you don't have to have strategy with respect to collective bargaining. I'm going to keep moving to ones that are more important to you. Okay, so on page five, it goes on to talk about other aspects that are not meetings, okay? So meetings of personal search committee for executive-level employment candidates. You guys went through this relatively recently with Josh, two years ago. And what we do there is we generally appoint an executive-level search committee. Oftentimes, it's the entirety of the board, so that you're kind of changing hats. And the reason why you do that again is that you get to talk about that person outside of the public purview. It's also helpful for the fact that you wouldn't get people coming in, right, to apply for jobs if they already have gainful employment, and then it's on, you know, the 10 o'clock news that you were there. Right? So it's a way to kind of be realistic about how those things would work in terms of people's career progression. Chance for social meetings not for the purpose of discussing official business, that was the birthday example. This one I often think of as the kind of run into people at the grocery kind of circumstance. Generally, it's not, again, as long as you're not talking about the business of the board in any larger, broad sense, and there's not a quorum of you, you're generally probably okay. I already said, strategy or negotiations with collective bargaining. And then the next one is political party caucuses. I think this question might have come up more talking too, about whether it would be considered a caucus if it's just one town versus the other town, versus a political party like on a R or E. The only way that that would be the case is that you can actually register with the state to say, we're an affiliate party or otherwise. You could probably do that only if you register with the state in advance, because you'll see here, meetings of caucuses under the FOI allows members of public agency to register either with the secretary of state or town clerks, a local agency, with their intention to act as a caucus, regardless of their political affiliation. So if caucuses, once properly registered, can meet without being subject to FOI's open meeting requirements. Agency members who decide to form such a caucus are restricted to only one such caucus at a time. A member cannot change caucus affiliation for FOI purposes for the duration of business or term in office and retains the caucus membership regardless of any change in political party enrollment. So that is a little restricting, right? So if you went down this path of like towns, and you called those caucuses, and you registered with the city clerk to say, this is our caucus, that means you couldn't caucus with your political party if that came up.
So Kevin, nine, I believe, of our members are of the same party. So could they all meet?
That's a really interesting one. And what's the overall number of them?
Ten.
Ten.
Right, nine are public and one independent?
I'm the outlier, unaffiliated.
Unaffiliated.
Unaffiliated, okay.
So could nine members meet under that?
Theoretically, yes.
Not requiring, you know?
No, no, right, no, but yes, theoretically, yes.
The town's clerk or a person?
No, he already registered as a Republican.
You already registered as part of that, so you can caucus as part of your political party. And that's essentially how it plays, but.
So that's like a swing in your campaign, and you can just say anything on a ticket, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Like when you have, a lot of times, unlike regional school boards, in non-regional school boards, it's much more prevalent that there are party-line votes. So you can caucus with your party about an upcoming vote on the agenda and come to consensus before you're at the board meeting. It's a little humid here in that it's not as politically charged, which is a good thing.
Right, right.
It's just an interesting nuance, that if your board was 100% one party, theoretically, you could have a board meeting as a caucus, not a board meeting.
Theoretically, yes. I mean, I think it could be easily pierced if you're not talking about, you know, if you decide to run the district that way, I think that could be, ah.
Interesting.
But you know what I'm saying. I think overall, like that would, you know, that could be pierced, but certainly, you know, if that's the case, if it's like essentially, we're getting together as a party to determine who we are going to put up as the board chair, and it's nine to one, that seems feasible, right? So.
Or let's just say, like somebody had a group chat or something, or we were talking about something going on locally, or some, you know, some, something that directly related to the board, but is that?
If it's not related to the board, you're fine. You're allowed to be friends, if you so choose. And have a group text.
The letter of the law and the spirit of the law are different things, and you know, they're best practice, so just because we can't, it doesn't mean we should, but.
And again, those text messages could get, you know, if there's an FOI, and it's amongst board members, and it has anything potentially to do with the public agency, that could be something you have to disclose, so.
And just so that I understand a little bit more, when you have like some of these like, you know, emails, you can understand pretty well. It is a distinct chain of communication. But once you start talking about text messages, or even like use of social media, and I'm not sure that we really have this problem, but that type of asynchronous communication, you know, there's, you may have like two or three sentences about one topic, three or four about another topic, back to, how much of, so if somebody submits it?
I think we were all on a Facebook page that was called like the regional, you know, school district number 15 Board of Education Facebook page, and you started to talk about the cost of pencils, and then everyone chimed in. I think that you could potentially have an illegal meeting, because you're discussing the business, you're all involved in that discourse. Interestingly enough, and this is still always developing, because we're kind of in a newer world the last 20, 25 years, but, you know, inquiry whether you're on that and you saw it and you didn't speak, right? But I bet you all have shown up at a board meeting and not said something once in a while, right? So it's kind of interesting to see how that would play out. There is some case law that gets at it, but it's really an individual circumstance. I don't think there's a broad stroke rule about those types of communications. What I did as an example is quite extreme, right? You guys would probably have that page that's not open to the public otherwise. But even if it were open to the public, part of the issue is that you have to adhere to the rules. And those include, and I'm going to talk about those now, that was my transition. So let's talk about meetings, okay? So, and I know we bled into records, but they kind of interact at times. We'll talk more about those in a little bit. So there's three types of meetings that you can have, right? There's a regular Board of Education meeting, a special Board of Education, and an emergency Board of Education meeting. Regular meetings are meetings that you in January file with your respective town clerks, and that is your schedule of, and in fact, I know that for sure that you did that this year. And those are, you know, do you guys do every other week or once a month?
Every week.
Every other week. So every other week, you have a regular meeting. And then in between those, you could have what they call a special meeting. For each of those, whether it be special or regular, you have to provide the public with at least 24 hours' notice of the meeting, okay? The big difference between the two is regular meetings are more malleable in terms of your conduct of business than a special meeting. Special meetings, you cannot modify the agenda, period. So once that's filed with the clerk, and if that was filed with the clerk in 24 hours and one minute, and you, and then you become within 24 hours, you can't change that, okay? You can at a regular meeting modify the agenda, whether it be by order or topic, including adding the executive session, but those all have to be done by two-thirds voted before. Make sense? Emergency meetings don't come up very often, but those are essentially, you have a meeting now and don't have time to notice it because of the emergent nature of it. So, you know, I think a public safety incident could fall under that, although oftentimes, that's going to play out, and by the time a board gets together, you'll probably already A, have an knowledge of what the incident was, and then B, be able to schedule a meeting to discuss it. Although at least hope that that's the case. Any questions about those different types of meetings and what the course of action is?
Can I go back to email just one?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
My burning question.
Yeah.
If I send an email to the whole board saying, reminder, tonight's meeting's at central office, which is different than we normally do, is that okay to do? Or is the problem, like, wouldn't people respond to me?
No, I mean, that's, that's just an administrative act, so I don't think you'd run into a problem. All right, there's a case in there, you have a chance to read it later, that essentially talks about that, a mayor sends out kind of a, you know, take a left and then a right at the light kind of thing, and that's not going to be seen as a problem. So that's okay. And I'm sorry, that was my chain of thought that I forgot earlier, was essentially that, we always say the best practice is in those instances where you are communicating with each other to not respond, right? And to even write, please don't respond to this.
Right.
Because then you're starting that chain of like, well, I think, and then I think, and what do you think? And then all of a sudden, you become potentially subject to having an illegal meeting, right? So the best, the best way to go there is just be like, it's an administrative thing, please don't respond, we'll talk about it at our next meeting, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so we have meetings, there's different types of meetings. You have to have 24 hours' notice that has to be posted with the clerk. You have to have an agenda, that agenda can't be modified unless that, unless that agenda receives two-thirds of a vote to modify and it can only happen at a regular. Executive sessions. Again, the purpose of the Freedom of Information Act is to have open government. And so as a result of that, there's very few circumscribed types of discussions that you can have outside of the purview of the public. And you can do that in an executive session, okay? So a couple of things. One, you have to have a two-thirds vote of the member of the public agency present at the meeting to go into executive sessions for the stated reason. And then let me talk to you a little bit about what those are for, okay? So the first one is discuss the appointment, employment, performance, evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, provided that such individual may require the discussion to be held in an open meeting. So that could go to a whole host of things, including the evaluation of the superintendent, right? We generally do that in an executive session, but he's notified of the fact that you're going to be discussing about his his evaluation, and therefore he could have it in public if he wanted in lieu of that. Those, and again, this is just about the meeting piece, not about the document piece, because that's separate and distinct in terms of accessibility. It could also be a situation where a custodian has, is a recidivist with respect to absenteeism and gets a three-day suspension. And the union greets him. And then it comes to you, well, that's actually about his performance as a public employee, right? And so therefore, what you would normally do in that circumstance is you would notice the meeting as an executive session. You have to provide that individual with notice, and again, if you wanted to have that in an open session, you could. Most people don't opt for that, but I have been at meetings where they do. So for whatever reason that may be. So everyone understand that exception, okay? I'm going to talk a little bit as we get to it, but in terms of the agendas, but I do want to talk about specificity of the notice as well and what that means. Because oftentimes, people under this one would say like personnel matter, which is infirm, and I'll get to the reason why.
For executive session as well, that would be to discuss a confidential student matter as well?
That's right, so that's one of the possibilities there. That's what we generally do when we have expulsion.
So for example, if the three or four of us were in an expulsion hearing and that's part of the executive session?
Yes.
You cannot speak to anyone, even anyone else on the board about what happened in that room?
That's right. And I, and you guys know who have been on that, that I always make a point of that right up front, that it's not to be discussed outside of it. You're getting more information in those types of meetings about specific students than board members generally get, and that's one very kind of clear exception that comes up. And you're only in the know insofar as you need to know to make a determination for an expulsion. And so if you started to go out and talk about, like, Johnny or Suzie, to your other colleagues who weren't there, you're essentially disclosing private, protected information that you all don't have the right to know. And that is, and I know, that's a really frustrating part of being a board member because there's this kind of like, no, I'm sorry, I can't talk to you about that, about specific kids that come up. And you live as part of the community and people talk and this is how we are. But that's one of the ones that you really have to buy by and, and you know, and that, I think if you start to talk out and it starts to get into the community more specifics about what happens, you lose faith with the community in terms of your ability to get in and do an expulsion in a respectful way, and you guys are great at it. But you know what I'm saying, if it starts to get out there in a way that like, oh, at the hearing Johnny said X, that could cut against your credibility in future hearings.
And also, we are bound by law, we cannot discuss with the public anything that has to deal with student discipline.
Yeah, and that's separate and distinct, that's under the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA. Those are much more stringent rules with respect to information that's accessible to the public. Even though we err on the side of openness, that isn't really about the functioning of a public agency, that's about a specific kid's education progress, right? Okay, so other possible executive sessions include discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or litigation to which a public agency or a member thereof is a party. This could also go to situations where you're thinking about filing possible litigation yourself. It expands out that far, so you can talk about, you know, if you were to ever have to do that. That doesn't come up very often in a formative way for boards of ed or public agencies, but there is occasion where that might be the case. And the next one is discuss matters of security, strategy, or the development of security personnel. That is, I think, for pretty obvious reasons, that if you're making a security plan, you don't really want the public to know exactly what the security plan is because it undoes the security, right? Gives people who might be, people who might do harm, a knowledge base about exactly what you're trying to accomplish. And then lastly is essentially discuss any matter which would result in the disclosure of public records that are exempt from disclosure. So that goes to the confidential student matter, right? And then the other big one that would fall under that category is attorney-client privilege memorandum. That's one of the reasons we go in, sometimes that's the way that we are able to talk. I can advise you without it being public knowledge. Obviously, there are many reasons why that is an important thing in order for you to make sure that you're protecting your rights in given circumstances.
Do you have to say why you're advising us, like?
Well, it's interesting, so let's talk about that, because that's a good segue. Because the next thing I want to talk about is what, what the agenda has to look like and what the notice has to look like. Because there's a lot of case law at the FOIC that essentially says that merely reciting the statutory language is insufficient. So like I said earlier, you can't just say personnel. So in the case of a student expulsion, we would notice the meeting and we would say, you know, student expulsion, the name wouldn't ever be identified because of the Federal Education Privacy Rights Act. And then we would go into an executive session to discuss a confidential student matter. So what that essentially does is it lets the public know what that meeting is, right? You know what it's going to be for student discipline, and it relates to a confidential student matter, essentially. So like new business, things like this, you need to have some kind of descriptor. And the reason is, is so that you can surprise the public. So if you're Heather at home and you're not on the board, but you're interested, you're a concerned citizen, if it just says personnel, you're not going to be like, hey, I have to like throw my coat on and head over there because what, you know, you have no idea what that means. Not that you'd probably be in if it was an executive session anyway, but that goes for open session too. Like whatever the subject of discourse is, the real thing to be thinking about is articulating in a way that anyone would know what you're going to be talking about. And that's kind of like, that's what a rule of thumb I generally use in most circumstances, is how it describes. So what's really interesting is the question that you posed, which is if you were going to say executive session to discuss attorney-client privilege memorandum, do you have to be more descriptive than that? And the answer there is, well, that's tough, right? Because it could be about a subject, like you could say, with respect to the lease for the school. That seems feasible. But if it's a circumstance where it's going to identify the discussion in a way that might break the attorney-client privilege, then I, there's an argument that says that you wouldn't have to be that specific in this. You know what I mean? So if you go too far into it such that the wherewithal of having that in an executive session is broken, then you don't, you don't have to go that far. Okay. Time is flying.
Kevin, I'm sorry, just one thing about the agendas.
Yes.
Apropos of public comment. When people make comments in public at our meeting?
Yes.
We typically don't respond. Can you talk a little bit about that, why that we have to do that?
Yeah, no, absolutely, that's a really good question. And it's, so you guys and many and most boards in the state offer a public comment session. You do it upfront and then at the back end, or?
Just at the end.
Just at the back end, okay. And it's a very frustrating part of the running of a board meeting because there are people who have sat there all night and they want to be heard. And they want you to respond because you're the board. And here's the reason why that's a problem from an FOI perspective. We went through all of what we just talked about, you have to give notice to the public. You have to, if you're going to modify the agenda, it has to be by a two-thirds vote of the board. And if I came up and just started talking about, first of all, a very specific personnel matter, if you don't have a rule that says you can't do that, then we're going to be having a discourse about the wherewithal of someone's teaching. And you certainly don't want to be in a situation where responding back to that, especially if you're not in the know about it, right? But the long and short of it is that you would be having a legal meeting if you just like start to to go right back at that person and adopt the subject that they're trying to get at. Because it isn't on your agenda. Now, can the board decide in that moment to have a two-thirds vote to modify? Yes, but you have to be careful about that. And it's not because you want to be excluding the public, it's that what topics are you going to say yes to and which ones are you going to say no to? Like, you know, it's a, it's a pretty dicey circumstance because, and then you could run into like content discrimination issues, like you're bringing that up and responding to it, but you're not about someone else's speech, right? So when we do the public comment sessions, you are allowed to have reasonable restriction on it, but it has to be restrictions that are nondiscriminatory. So none of, none of the restrictions can be content-based. So it can't be about necessarily what you're speaking about, unless it's a rule of general applicability. And so, and I don't, you guys do have some restrictive language, right?
Three minutes.
And the three-minute rule, and that's another thing to be mindful of is, again, that's difficult sometimes because, although three minutes is surprisingly long. But if someone like goes over the three minutes and they're talking about something that everyone likes, and then, you know, a fascist comes up and no one likes that, and then they want to go over three minutes and you don't let them, the assumption's going to be it's because you don't like what they're saying. And then you have a potential First Amendment issue, right? Or hate, love, or whatever, you know, there's all these things out there. But that's always like the most kind of extreme thing I can think of in those circumstances, but you have to be careful about it. And so, and that's just, you know, if you have a three-minute rule, get the timer, gavel down, and then people should be respectful and move on to the next. That's not always the case, but generally it is. Which brings me also to the conduct of a meeting if people are videotaping or loud, right? And so, and have you had that happen, like, where, first of all, it does nothing that excludes people from making their own tape? Is this any tape right now, by the way? Because this is like a massive vault. I just realized, I chose the, like, the totally wrong spot, right? Actually, all, all doesn't matter anymore. So so as long as people aren't being disruptive, that's acceptable. Now, if you do have someone who gets up and starts screaming in a board meeting, what do you do? You can eject them, right? Because if they're being a public disturbance, that's a lot. Obviously, if you're a, if you're a SOB there, you can have that person publicly.
Who does the eject, ejecting if there's no SOB?
I think it would be you.
Board chair.
Yeah.
That's why they make those like, you know, hard to read.
Kevin, wouldn't it be better just to adjourn the meeting at that point?
Well, yes and no, because if you do that, then it gives control over the person who's making the public nuisance.
Yeah, but now you stopped them from talking because you stopped the meeting, so therefore no recording is going on.
Oh, I mean, in the case of a recording, but you're recording anyway, so. You know, and I've had questions over the years and it comes up, and it's upsetting to people, but where someone has taken a recording, like whether it be video or otherwise, because it gets posted on the internet and then chopped it up for like political purposes. You know, you gave certain sides of the story and, and you know, the long and short of it is that it's the First Amendment, people are allowed to do that, it exists out in the ethers and it's public information. But I don't know if I would necessarily shut them down that way. I think I would say, you're being disruptive, you can either, you know, if you, if you continue with this, we're going to ask you to leave.
But we also have the documentation of our own recording.
Yes.
So if someone does chop it up and does something, we can always point to the fact that...
The whole idea of the First Amendment is that you're supposed to be able to combat speech with speech, right? And so, absolutely. But then that's something that's political, right? You have to decide as a group that that's how you want it to act. Because, you know, in the end, that's what it comes down to, as a board member, you don't have a lot of individual power. And I think that's a misperception of the public when they come to you and say, I don't like teacher X, and what are you going to do about it, right? You can't really do too much about it. Because that's not your job, right? Your job is to run the school district, work on policy, and do budget. And in fact, that very example puts you into a bind because people want you to be responsive in those circumstances. But there are a number of times where you guys have to ask as impartial arbiters of different circumstances, one of which is teacher termination, because under the statute for tenure, teachers aren't terminated and then get to go to arbitration. The superintendent recommends termination. And then the teacher can either come to you or to an independent hearing officer to get a disposition. And then not until then is the person fired, okay? And it's always not until the vote of the board. So even if it's an independent hearing officer, they will write a decision that outlines the facts and also their recommendation as to whether they should be dismissed. And then you have a meeting where you go over that and then you decide to fire or not. So if you're pre-gaining it and you're hearing information that's not put in front of you, right, as a point of due process, you could have prejudged that circumstance and either have to recuse yourself, right? Because you can't make a decision without knowing that you have information that maybe isn't in the public purview. And then there's some ethical concerns there. Or, you know, so you can't participate at all, which is not holding up your oath to do what you're supposed to do here. Or you're opening up the board, right, to a potential claim of bias or otherwise, that you knew that, you were involved in a way that you shouldn't have been. So there is reasons why those conversations aren't fruitful.
Well, the same could be said for expulsion hearings too. You kind of have to tell people, don't tell me what the rumors are, I don't want to hear the rumors.
It's exactly the same thing, right?
Because, you know, you have to go in there with an open mind.
And, and in the end, the best response to all of those things is please call the superintendent, talk to him. And then, and Josh has really commented at getting through those dicey circumstances. But that's the best response, it's like, hey, you know, A, I don't know, B, I don't really have any control over that. That's not what we do as a board. And again, I understand it can be unsatisfying. And that's, you know, a commonality amongst many boards and board members. But there are reasons why we act that way. And there's reasons why, there's reasons why we don't, we cut some people, we don't cut some people off, not other people. It's not just because we don't like what they're saying. It's just the appearance of that. So, okay. Let me go on to records, unless there's any other questions about... So again, sorry, I'm already running late. So we talked about meetings, meeting process, board member rules in that context. The other issue is records, and those are the two wings of what the Freedom of Information Act covers. We actually have talked a lot about these, but let me go down to basically what is not disclosable. Because I think this goes to a little bit of your note-taking issue as well, so I'm looking on page 14. Middle of the page. In accordance with 1-210B, the following documents are not subject to disclosure. Preliminary drafts or notes provided that a public agency has determined that it is in the public interest in withholding such documents clearly outweighs the public interest in disclosure. That's a balancing test that we often use, is is the reason to hold it back sufficient enough to defeat the public purpose? Almost never is that the case. So just kind of not to get your hopes up in the event that that was ever going to be the situation, so. So what is a preliminary note or draft?
Anything.
Well, but it isn't, right? So I usually think of it as it's something that was used to parlay into a final topic, right? Because it's not a preliminary note or draft if you don't follow through.
It's like a draft of a policy that you're working on.
Sure, and then the policy is disclosable if your preliminary notes and graphs are not, right? Or a letter, or anything of that nature, especially when you have multiple people having input, right? So that makes sense. But, yeah, I mean, just be careful about that one.
Or a statement?
Yeah.
You had to have a statement?
No, I mean, a statement, like investigative files, all of those things are disclosable. Now, we make the argument in a general proposition that it's a preliminary note or draft. Like if I'm doing the investigation, or if Josh is doing an internal investigation and he's writing out notes and starting to draft his final report, those are not going to be subject to disclosure, right? But once that report becomes final, that is. And so what they're protecting is the process, really, that like his thinking might change through the course of the investigation, not holding people to those, those opinions as you go. And for any of you who have done that type of work, you know, things change and you have to keep an open mind or you're, you know, going to not do yourself any favors, so. So don't go too far with the preliminary notes or graphs, however, that does come up as a regular basis. And as long as it's parlayed into something else, that's something that wouldn't be disclosed. But if it's, if that's all you did is you took notes, that's not the same thing as a preliminary note or draft, okay? So that kind of goes back to where we started from. The next one is personnel or medical files and similar files, disclosure of which would constitute an invasion of personal privacy. So, most public employees' personnel files are subject to disclosure under the Freedom of Information Act. The exceptions are this, which is an invasion of privacy in medical files. And then the other sole exception in the functioning of the school district is evaluations of certified staff are not subject to disclosure, evaluative material. It's an, it's an interesting law, it's different in different states, actually. A lot of... A lot of states hold back disciplinary action, Connecticut does not. So if I'm a teacher and I have three letters of discipline, anyone can come in and get it. If I'm a teacher and I get a needs improvement done or my evaluation, no one's going to see it. And that's just kind of what the law is. It's an interesting dynamic, because I always think to myself, like, what is the one thing I would want to see, right? Is how good is my kid teaching? You know, are they being thought highly of as a colleague? Now, you can see that that would also become difficult if that was disclosed, because first of all, you give people an opportunity for remedial action if they're not functioning well, and that would really hamper that ability if everyone in the public was then commenting on, you know, someone didn't do as well as someone else, et cetera, so on and so forth. So there is some kind of methodology to it, I think that makes sense. Invasion of privacy. What happens in a case where the administration receives an FOI complaint that they think contains material that could be seen as an invasion of privacy, we notify the individual that the request is made, and we allow that individual to object, okay? So we wouldn't put it out in as timely of a way, generally. Now, what is an invasion of privacy in this context? It's quite, it's a quite high bar. It's not things of like, you're just embarrassed by, it's only discipline, like that could be something that you're embarrassed by, that that's not going to meet the standard. It's generally like, if there's something in your file, a note that then goes to talk about the fact that you had an extramarital affair, or your divorce proceedings, things that I think an objective person would think are an invasion of privacy and not really, essentially newsworthy, right? Not something that's in the public interest, like, no one should know about anyone's private life to that extent, and if there is a notation of it, that's what this is trying to get at. But it can't be something that's about an employee's functioning and their role as an employee of the district, okay? And then there's a whole bunch more here, test questions, scoring keys, and other data used to administer a licensing exam, examination for employment, or academic exams, and you can go through the list here, there's quite a few of them. And it goes all the way through onto the next three or four pages about things that would not be records that have to be disclosed. I'm not going to walk through all of them, I think we've covered the ones that are, that are more important for you guys. One of the other things, just so you know, and it's not specific in here, is that we never, ever disclose DCF records, and they have a special statutory structure and regulatory structure for that very purpose, that it says it has to be held private regardless of where it's housed. So no matter where it is, public agency or otherwise, those records are not to be disclosed. Timing on requests. So there's this kind of common parlance that's come around about a four-day notice, like, I have four days to answer, I don't know if any of you have heard that before. That only comes up in certain instances. Usually that's an initial response to say, I received it, however, your request is voluminous, if they're asking for a lot of information, it's going to take me more time. So there isn't a circumstance where a four-day, you have to hand it over within four days. However, if the request is, I'd like to see the form you use for a field trip, and it's sitting on Josh's desk, you just get it, you can't say I need three weeks to get you that information, because it clearly doesn't take you three weeks to hand a piece of paper to someone, it's in spack. There are rules in here, and I won't go into them specifically, because you guys probably won't have to deal with them, that's a bolt, in terms of charging for copying, and, but essentially what you do is allow people to have the ability to inspect the records. If there is a voluminous amount, you can charge 50 cents a page. And oftentimes, that's instituted, because, you know, what happens is, and it's all in the sake of open government, but there is a cost at times, because sometimes, I've had, I've had requests that have, like, had to have districts to vote two to three people for like two weeks, just going through boxes to find information. And so there's a cost to that, right? Because they're not doing what they're otherwise slated to do, et cetera, so on and so forth, you know? So oftentimes, people will, will go ahead and do that. There is an exception for board members, that there shouldn't be a charge if a board member did that. Just so you know. Yeah, it says, incorrect, and further, the public agency automatically has four days to respond to requests. If a record is readily available for inspection or copying, it is a violation of law to make that person requesting the record wait four days. Now, that being said, most of them are more voluminous. The other thing to keep in mind is this, you do not have to answer questions, that is not what the FOI is. So if you get a letter that says, I, hey, board, or hey, superintendent and board, here's the 10 things that I don't like, please explain them all to me, you are under no obligation to do that. The FOI is about meetings and records, and if you make an FOI request for a record, it either exists or it doesn't exist, right, wrong, or otherwise, right? Because you could have a records retention issue, which is kind of a separate and distinct issue. And then you're bound to give it over, or, or there's an exception, and that's kind of what we went through, right, in a cursory way. You are not bound to answer those questions, you are not bound to create a spreadsheet that says, like, if someone wanted financial documents, but they don't like the form that you did it in, there is case law that says if it's easily convertible, like, so if you went from like Munist to Excel, that that would be something that you have to do, and you have to provide it in electronic format, you aren't required to get formulas, right? So that is kind of the one time that that would happen, but if they're saying, I don't like how you structured your budget, please put it in the following format and send it to me, absolutely not. Because it's not up to the public, like, you're still an agency, right? And you have a very, it's a big agency, and you have a lot of employees, and, and people are busy, and it wouldn't be right, because then you would be essentially spending all of your time answering to the public's want in terms of form, and that's not okay, right? Because again, someone, you know, you're the ones who decide how to control your budget, and to articulate it in the way that you think is right in the court. Does that make sense? I think I covered everything. What do you think?
Great job, anyway.
Can I go all the way back to what was the meeting?
Yes.
And I, the question is a little bit more specific to some of these committees that we have.
Okay.
So we have a couple of subcommittees that may have five or even less members.
Yes.
You know, when you're talking about a committee that's small, somebody's got the flu, somebody's baby sister didn't show up, you know, suddenly you have a committee that has five people on it, maybe two people are there. Can you still have the meeting?
No.
Okay.
No, it's still a public meeting, and so you still need to have a forum. It doesn't have to be a forum of the board, but it has to be a forum of the articulated subcommittee.
Of the committee, yes, okay.
Any other questions? I was supposed to give you 20 minutes, but I'm giving you three, so.
This is a, the law plus judgments on it.
Yes, there are case notations about very specific circumstances.
Well, I've been told a Freedom of Information meetings, I forgot his name, the persons that's in charge, would hand out this little, maybe a small brochure, which indicated the whole law, and it was this, you know, you opened it up, they tore you everything in a fuse.
Are you trying to say I wasted paper, is that what I'm meaning?
Right, you understand what I'm talking about, so it was a little card like. Do you have any of those?
I don't, but I could look to see if we can grab any.
Can you get it for the members, so that we know, you know, it's just a little...
I have short outlines, but I figured these are good, because the case sites in here kind of give some flesh to some of the larger concepts.
Yeah.
Now, I wouldn't recommend reading for bed, but, you know, if you're interested on a particular subject, there's more information than I was able to say in here.
Try to consolidate it to, you know...
I'll keep, I'll keep an eye out. I think I remember it, actually, but it's been years.
Josh says a lot in 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Some people take 10 minutes to say, it takes 10 minutes to talk.
Yeah.
Josh will do this in 10 seconds.
Right.
So, you know, consolidate everything.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Kevin.
I cherish it.
Very informative.
Anything else, guys? I hope I covered what you were hoping to hear about.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
Really appreciate you coming tonight.
It's nice to not have a, you know, more difficult circumstance.
Kevin, send me one of those, I need to get one of those to Peter Deckero.
I can do better off. I'm not going to take this as an insult, Steve, don't worry about it. I bet the jury goes in that.
Next, any and approval of minutes for January 27, 2020.
Motion to approve the minutes of the January 27, 2020, regular meeting of the Board of Education.
Second. Any discussion? Call those in favor.
All right.
Any nays, propositions, it passes. And next, information and proposals, board committee reports, Policy and Curriculum Committee, Mr. Stephen Seriani.
No report.
Next, PTO advisory, Ms. Heather Quire.
PTO advisory met on February 6th, we discussed the school budget process, including the membership, health insurance, projections, and presentation of that to PTOs. We also discussed some general school discipline questions.
Any questions? Next, board member comments. No board member comments. Next, superintendent's report, Mr. Joshua Smith.
A couple of things. Last week, the Global Citizenship Committee met, it was February 5th. One of the things that's happened about a month and a half ago, we were at a workshop as a district with Dr. Ramos, who's a former superintendent from Connecticut that's doing a lot of work with cultural understanding, cultural sensitivity, diversity, so we brought him in. His son is also a school counselor, or school psychologist in Bridgeport Public Schools, two of them work as a team, so they've joined our district-wide committee. What was nice is that some of the folks that have reached out to us over the last month and a half, we extended invites to, they did join, and then we continue to extend that invite. Purpose of our Global Citizenship Committee is not to be just a school district committee, but a community one, and so as members of the community are interested, there are seats at the table for anybody that wants to join. We've also reworked our website, one of the things that's happened is we realized that we're doing a lot of work around social emotional learning, cultural awareness, and diversity, but finding them in one place on our website wasn't easy. So we've kind of collapsed a lot of those links into one page, so that all the work and all those presentations that Dr. Chiphead has done over the last two years for the board are now a lot easier to find, if people are looking. On a completely different note, that the state has released the accountability reports for the state, where they rank us on a whole bunch of different criteria, and that's that next-gen accountability that we went over at the board workshop this past summer, the new ones are out, the nice piece is that Gadefield was listed as a school of distinction. I have mixed feelings about when we start categorizing schools with, with titles, because that school of distinction is an annual marker, there's a lot of different reasons for that, and so you may get it, especially on one indicator or one series of indicators for a year, and then next year it'd be a category two, which is, you're a really good school, but you don't get that mark of distinction. So I try not to get too excited, not that I'm taking anything away from our school of distinction, but it doesn't say that the other schools don't have really high quality. And I think when you start labeling schools in one district, that's especially a smaller district, it tends to pit schools against each other, I understand why the state does it, but I would like to see them recognize schools, not just that, and for a growth factor, although important, but for other factors. And so I think you start to split hairs, and I don't want folks that aren't at a school of distinction to start to think that their school isn't as good, or that the school of distinction doesn't have things to improve on. And so while we celebrate that, we also recognize that it's one marker out of a large number of markers that we look at for our school's success. Last week, every five years, the state is required to audit school lunch programs, and so last week was our school lunch program, the challenge for us was that Ms. Sullivan, our new director, had only been at schools on the ground for about three months before this audit came, and so I just wanted to recognize the work that she did along with the staff of both the high school and along medley, the two schools that were identified for evaluation, to make sure that we had changed some of the things that we needed to do, that we knew needed work, and they did a lot of work in a very short period of time, that audit was extremely successful, we did very well, there's obviously things that we can improve upon, but overall, that was a really positive audit, and that didn't happen by mistake. And then the last piece that I'll speak to is that our next board meeting will be the presentation of the school district's proposed budget, and that will be back at the high school, and we'll start the process. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next, comments from citizens. The Board of Education will recognize citizens of Middlebury and Southbury, and citizens are asked to state their name, their town of residence, and to limit their comments to three minutes.
I guess I'm the only one? Okay. Should I just stay right here? Okay, I have something written, so I hope that I'll be heard well enough. And I have to say, I did practice at home, so I hope I don't get in trouble if I go over the three minutes by a tad, I'll try my best, I'll try.
Once you state your name and your city of residence, I'll start to fly.
Okay.
Now that we had this presentation by the attorney, go ahead.
Yeah, he just left, so we can do this. Okay, all right, um, okay. Good evening, Region 15 Board of Education members, thank you very much for the opportunity to voice my public concern tonight. My name is Melissa Parisi, I come to you as a parent and an educator, I've been an ESL teacher in the Waterbury Public School System since 2002. I'm a Middlebury resident and a former Region 15 student, myself raised in Southbury. My husband Jeff Betty and I have four healthy children, our first, a high honors eighth grader at MMS, and three which attend MES, a fifth grader and a fourth grader who excel both academically and socially, and our youngest is an extremely bright and social kindergartner who wakes up every school morning excited to hop on the bus and go because she simply loves learning. All of our children are highly motivated, physically adept, musically inclined. We couldn't be more pleased with the education and personal attention each and every teacher and staff member at both schools has given to our children. As lifelong residents, we've always known that we wanted to raise our children in a district that takes such consideration of the health and well-being of its students. Tonight, I would like to bring to your attention the HB 5044 bill that was drafted this past Friday. This legislation intends to repeal the religious exemption to vaccinations in order for children to attend all Connecticut public, private preschools, daycare centers, colleges, and universities. The religious exemption to vaccinations has been in place for the last 60 years with no cause for concern. As the law is stated now, if an outbreak occurs, then those students who use this exemption must stay at home until the school is clear of the illness. This has always worked. It is important to note here that there is zero scientific evidence to show that those who use this religious exemption are the source of outbreaks. If HB 5044 is passed in this session, it is estimated that between 15,000 and 20,000 families in the state of Connecticut will be denied their constitutional right to equal protection and of public education for Article 8, Section 1, and Article 1, Section 20. 26,000 students from New York and 55,000 students from California were all stripped of their education because of the same bill passed. Given that the Region 15, given that Region 15 currently has a significant number of students using this exemption, it is imperative that, sorry, the data be considered a high priority to you, the board, of our district, and by every Connecticut district, many of which are completely unaware of this issue at all, before this legislation is to be voted on. It is your duty to consider the implications this will have on the livelihood of families in our community and the discrimination it carries to the lives of our children if it indeed passes. I implore you to put this on the topic of agenda discussions and to reach out to your senators after tonight. I feel it's also my responsibility to share with you the unforeseen effects our district will endure in the case that this legislation does pass. If the religious exemption is repealed, what happens then to those students? Will our district provide alternate schooling for those children? Will parents be forced to quit their jobs so that they can now homeschool? Will those students who are part of sports teams, bands, and extracurricular clubs no longer be allowed to participate? And what of those students who have received scholarships? Will they not be allowed to use them to attain their goals through higher education? If someone has a religious exemption to just, objection to just one vaccine, their educational career can be denied. And how will our district respond to those families who use a religious exemption and have students with IEPs and 504s? Is the district prepared to handle the potential legal ramifications based on non-compliance in providing students access to the services they are entitled to by law? What then? It is important to also mention the estimated...
I'm so sorry you breached the three minutes.
Can I not just do a little bit more?
Yep, she could, oh, you could submit the written piece to us.
I can?
Yep.
No.
I, um, thank you so much for your comments, we really appreciate it, but as you just heard our attorney say, we have to be...
Okay.
...equal to everyone who...
Okay, I understand.
But we would very much appreciate if you would like to submit your comments to us.
I'll give you the rest, and I also have some handouts for you, too. So I just wanted you to take a look, the last paragraph was, you know, kudos to all So I just wanted you to take a look, the last paragraph was, you know, kudos to all of the work that the teachers do here, and how much we actually love this school and this district, I mean, school Josh, we graduated the same year, we know, you know, we're old buddies, but I'll submit the rest, I think it's really important. So in this packet, and I apologize, I only have six copies of the packet, and six copies of everything I'm going to give you, but it's an invitation to an informative event happening this Thursday in Hartford, I'm not sure what you guys...
You could just give it all to me, and I'll take care of it.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
And those are letters from New York superintendents also, that are undergoing the same issues right now, and if you'd like to also take a list of the 2018 child vaccine schedule, this is a copy of the bill itself, and some extra added information, and if you'd also like, this is the actual bill, and those are kind of the Cliff Notes to itself. I'm sure it has come your way, just, I know, I won't...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Um, new business requiring board action, there's none. Announcement of future meetings, Monday, February 24, 2020, Policy and Curriculum Meeting at Pom Rob High School Media Center at 6:30, and Monday, February 24, 2020, the Board of Education regular meeting at the Pom Rob High School Media Center at 7:30, and that will be our 2020, 2021 budget presentation. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
Move that the Board of Education move into executive session to discuss the superintendent's mid-year evaluation, and to invite Mr. Smith into the meeting.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, the motion passes? Move into executive session. We're just going to stay there.
We're just going to move people out.
I am so, it's so hard to cut people off. But you just heard, like, I wish we could have them talking to every, before every public comment. Thank you so much.